Curriculum Committee Report.
All right, great. Is this, I don't see the record button. I assume it's going. Oh, there it is. Okay, just want to be sure. Yes, Curriculum Committee. Let's see, the action items are final approval of the 2021-2024 Special Education Comprehensive Plan. Are there any questions on that? No? Okay. We have final approval of the curriculum for the eighth grade English curriculum. Any questions on that? No? Okay. Let's see. Approve the use of the CK-12 as a digital content provider for digital textbooks and resources. And I assume this has to do with our online, new online world?
Yes, it does. So just to speak to that a little bit, CK-12 is a digital content provider. It is a free service that we did start using in the last week. Primarily, it provides flexbooks or digital textbooks at no cost, and then also has a lot of different features that allow simulations, online, you know, interactive tools, primarily focused on middle school and high school, and is heavy in the math and science area. So since it is not an approved, on our approved list for textbooks, I felt the need to bring it to the board's attention.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on that from anyone? Okay. Approve the use of Odysseyware as an outline provider for the digital curriculum and online courses in the collaboration at the CAIU.
Yeah, so another bit, just to kind of explain what that is, is we partner with COLA through the CAIU for our online education package, and we were getting some parents that were looking for something more robust than what we were offering. This is tied to PDE's offering of free content that's more of a cyber-based education. It is a curriculum that is not our curriculum. It is provided by Odysseyware, the provider. Our teachers would be providing the backdrop of that work, overseeing and supervising the work that students would be doing. But the content they would be going through, pretty much an ELA, a math, a science, and social studies at each grade level is what they would be working, working to, and it would be tied and done the same way that we do our COLA program. We just typically don't, not typically, we have not opened up our COLA program to elementary students, so that would be the change here.
Okay. Sounds good. Any questions from the board? All right. Okay, discussion items, 1920 school year update.
So I had asked Matt to work with the high school, the high school administration to put together just an analysis of our graduation requirements to see if there was any, any need to make, to waive any board policy that goes along with, with graduation. So Matt, can, I know you sent out the, or the attachment there as to a document, giving that over. You just want to hit some highlights on that?
Sure. Much here. Can you see my screen, everyone?
Uh huh.
Yeah. So, so basically, we'll quickly go through it. We always look to policy anytime there are changes in legislation. So school closure, Act 13, so on and so forth, we kind of double back and just make sure that our policy doesn't need to be adjusted. In northern, for us, our policies are intentionally written in more general guidelines, and then we get specific in our admin guidelines. But we don't, we don't spell out every detail in our policy, and the reason for that is every time the state would change from PSAs to keystones, or place a moratorium on the keystones, or if we wanted to add financial literacy, so on and so forth, we'd be having to bring the board policy for 30 days plus 30 days each time. So, so for us, we don't need to adjust our board policy at all. However, since we are looking at that, and since the adoption of the graduation requirements is a function of the board, we thought it would be good to just kind of go through and highlight some points here. So the first thing that we have listed here on this document are some of the items that the Pennsylvania Department of Education has released since the school closure. Lots of questions on are seniors even going to be able to graduate? And what requirements are going to be there for, for senior students? And what kind of allowances will be made for seniors? And so just copy and paste it, some of those items there in terms of what the state is recommending that districts do. You know, review the status of each senior, which we do every year, to determine the extent to which they're on track and provide anything that we need to provide to help them. Basically, this here allows us to say, if they were failing as of March 13th, that we could then help to remediate that failing grade. And so, like I said, our policy doesn't need to be changed. Our policy is very clear, the board adopts the requirements, and the board confers that title of, of graduate. But here are the guidelines that we currently have for our graduation requirements for the class of 2020. Again, none of these need to be changed. Some of the things we are looking at, so the board is aware. Seniors get credits for co-ops, internships, some field-based learning. Of course, if a kid's job is no longer operating, or if they can't go to their job, and they normally get credits for that, then we're going to have to work with the student to come up with an alternate learning plan. So that's the first action step there. We do this every year, seniors at risk of failing, but since it was actually in the PDE guidance, I did add that to this page that simply says, we are looking over each seniors, see where they're at with their graduation, meeting the graduation requirements. And Steph DePalmer and Mike Walker are, are working on, on tracking that. One change we did do for remediation is we're allowing seniors to start their summer school or their remediation during the fourth marking period. So typically, we would hold that off until the year ended. But with the school closure and with the guidance offered by PDE, one thing we are permitting is any student that mathematically failed, any senior that mathematically failed by the end of the third, at the end of the third marking period, those seniors are permitted to start their remediation course during the fourth marking period. And then we also waived, we have a two-course maximum. It's ways students don't get to take, you know, six remediation courses over the summer and get credit for the entire year. So we have a two-course maximum for summer school, but we are waiving that and the cost. In terms of the electives also, we do have some students, well, one student, that may have failed a elective course as of the end of the third marking period. And there is no comparable online elective course for that student to take for remediation this marking period. And so what we're doing there is the high school admin and the counselors are just working with the teacher to come up with some alternate options for those students. So it's not one of those situations where if you happen to fail a course that doesn't have a remediation, too bad, too sad, you don't get a diploma, but if the course you failed has an online course, we didn't want that scenario. So we're, we're going in and making sure that seniors that failed by the end of the third marking period, if they don't have an online course, we're coming up with some alternate projects. And then as always, special education kids can graduate either by fulfilling our graduation requirements or by completing their IEP goals, and Dave Burrell and the IEP teams have been monitoring that. So I'll stop sharing the screen. I wanted to just kind of quickly go through that, and I'll open it up for any questions, thoughts, comments, concerns.
Has there been any thought about the graduation date? Is it still on? Is it still planned?
Lots of thoughts.
I'm sure.
I'll just jump in with that. Steve Lehman and I are having an online meeting tomorrow with a committee of students and staff. And we've collected the thought exchange. Of course, there's a lot of sentiment for having some type of a quote-unquote "normal" graduation at some point in time. What I've suggested to Steve is that we plan for some type of a June 2nd graduation, as well as some type of a, something later on when we can safely come together and so forth. So we're, that was just my suggestion, so we'll, we'll listen to what the, what the committee has to say. There's a lot of samples out there. A lot of, a lot of schools are giving suggestions as to how they're handling it, so.
Okay, that's to be continued then, which is fine. Okay, my last item on my committee is the 2021 school year planning.
So I just wanted to, to give an update before we go to 2021, just to kind of give an update on 1920. I will share my screen right now if I can. So this is the calendar for the remainder of the year. The last school day was scheduled to be June 2nd. We are going to, to maintain that as the last school day. We had two teacher-in-service days after that. And Mr. Beals, remind me, we used one of those early on in the, in the cancellation, is that right?
Correct.
So our last day for staff then would be, would be June 3rd. So we're working through the intricacies of how long the, you know, the, the fourth marking period is going to be significantly, or somewhat shorter than, than the other three marking periods, and, and how we end the school year, and how those grades will be calculated and so forth. So stay tuned on that as well. But I know that question has come up as to, you know, when is the last day, when is the last day of instruction? We are following the calendar as is right now. The 2021 calendar, which I think you can see right now, can you see?
Yes.
I, I only bring this up as we need to be thinking about, about the following school year and how we continue to, hopefully, we are back in, in full force and we're able to start on the, on August 26th with the first day for students, but there's already been, been conversation of the what-ifs, and what if we can't start at that time, what if, you know, schools aren't able to open as normal? I know some schools are talking about the possibility of looking at an alternative calendar that may push the start time back for students if necessary, and front-load in-service days at the beginning of the year. Some are talking about what would it look like if you ran an A-D schedule, meaning some students, you know, half the students came in on, on one day, the other half came in on, on another day, and you went back and forth that way. There's all kinds of models that are being talked about out there. Too early for us to do anything at this point, just though that we're keeping our, our ear to the ground on that. And at this point, we're maintaining the calendar for 2021 that we have. But it may be necessary, we certainly hope it's not, but it may be necessary for the board to revisit this in the future and do some type of revision of that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on, on that. Let me just say that the instruction that is going on by our teachers is, is phenomenal. The fact that they've moved from a classroom setting to an online setting in a very brief period of time is a strong testament to, to Mr. Beals, to our technology department, to our principals, and to our teachers who are carrying out instruction. I'm not going to sugarcoat this, it's not the same as being in school. And it simply is not. I think Zach could probably tell you from a student's perspective that, and I think Mr. Griscavich can tell you that from a teacher's perspective. It's not the same as being in school, but we are maintaining instruction and we are moving forward. So I appreciate all of their hard work for that. That's all I have. Dr. McLean?
All right. Well, thank you. That ends the Curriculum Committee Report.
Okay, thank you. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Rudy.
Yeah, we have two facility use requests there for football games and practices for the fall. And then the authorization of the invitation to bid for the turf field. Any questions or discussion on that?
If I can just chime in on a couple of things there. First of all, just know that the request for the use of facilities, that's all pending. Obviously, any kind of governmental recommendations, that we should not have those. So just know that that's, we have to take that into consideration. The, the authorization to issue an invitation for bids, just to give everyone an update on where we are with, with this project. The Polar Bear Foundation and its representatives on the, on the turf field committee have been reaching out to our donors, saying, are, you know, asking, are, are you still able, are you still committed, are you still willing? Overwhelmingly, we're getting a positive response to that. However, there's as much unknown in the, in the business world as there, or maybe more unknown in the business world as there is in the education world right now. And so there is some, there is some feelings that before any donations are made, these businesses need to know that the board is committed to this. And there's also conversation as to, but we'd be willing to, to delay for some point in time, but not, not further than a year. We can't make this commitment and, and then have this hanging out three, four, or five years from now. So that being said, I talked with Anthony Kohlstock, who is our architect on this project, asking him, first of all, you know, how long are the bids good for? Obviously, you have to award a bid or, or reject all bids within a 60-day timeframe of opening the bids. And I asked him also, so how long are the, all the planning documents good for? The, the permits that we're getting from the county and from the township? He was going to check on that, but that, that is much longer. He thinks somewhere between two and five years. Actually, I'm getting a, a text from him right now, and he says that the county would be 2024, and the township is for five years. So that to say that what we have done so far on this, it's not wasted money, and it's not wasted time because we do have that, that ability. One of the things Anthony talked to me about also is that we could have them provide 100% of the documentation for this project to the, the vendors that are on the state bid list. So you, you've heard this before when we did the roofing project. There are vendors that you can do this through state bid, that you don't have to go through a bidding process. He feels that by doing that, you'll get a, an accurate assessment of, of what the cost actually is without going out to bid. And then if you're looking at those costs and saying, okay, we've raised X number of dollars, and the cost of this project is Y, then what's the difference and can we, can we budget that? That doesn't prohibit you from going out and doing a formal bid process, and you still may want to do that. As you know, we did that with the roofing project just to see if, if there's a possibility that we could get better, better prices, you know, maybe, maybe we have contractors that don't have the work and are interested in doing the work, or interested in doing it in a certain timeframe. But he did indicate that if, if contractors know that there's concern about moving forward with this, and there's a possibility that it won't, that it won't play out, they're not going to put the effort into sharpening their pencil and, and, you know, giving the best, the best prices for that. So my recommendation, and then I'll stop talking and let questions and comment. My recommendation is that we move forward with the, the motion to approve the authorization to issue those bids, but not necessarily move forward with, with actually putting it out to bid until we get some information back from the state bid to see, to get some more accurate numbers. So I'll stop there and let, let some other people ask questions.
So I did talk to my husband about this because he's a construction estimator. And he said that right now, if we would put this out to bid, it would come in significantly lower if the economy bounces back and we choose to rebid it again in a year. The cost will go up, obviously. But he said if we're planning on doing this, then definitely bid it now because we will get the best price.
Yeah, that's really helpful to hear from someone that's, that's in the field, so thank you.
So we will get the best price, but understanding we're not doing it right now.
Well, I mean, we would have to do it now if we would want to get a better price. But now that's saying if, you know, in a year it, things aren't better, it, it wouldn't necessarily go up. I mean, it's just all up in the air right now.
Yeah, and remember, we put it out to bid, we get the, the bids in, and the board has the right to accept, and they have the right to reject. So it doesn't commit to anything but just by going through the bidding process. However, as I stated earlier, if there's a sense that we're just doing this just to get cost estimates, you may not get the, the best price. And as Alyssa said, if they, if they realize that you're serious about this and want to do this project, there's, there's a desire by the contractors, and it might get some really attractive costs or bids.
Just, just because we authorize it, you could still then not actually put it out for bid, correct? Without us authorizing, that ties your hands and does not give you the, the ability to publicly advertise this.
Yeah, exactly right. And kind of where I was heading with this was, give us the ability to authorize at, at a, at a time that, that the architects administration feel that it's, it's best. Let us go out and get some, some firm numbers from the state contract, and, and let us report back to you what those numbers are. But like, like Greg said, it doesn't tie our hands, saying that we have to wait for a certain, a, a certain point in time to, to put the bids out. With your authorization, we could do them at any given point in the future.
So just to be clear, Eric, what you're recommending is try to go through some state sources first and keeping our options open with, with bidding it.
Correct. And that doesn't necessarily mean waiting for six months to bid. That, that simply means let us get some accurate numbers. All the state bid numbers we've gotten are based on assumptions and estimates. Now we have 100% of the documents prepared. Let them send it out to, I think it's A-Turf and Field Turf. Let them give us their state contract bid on it. Let us take a look at it and, and, and see what, what those estimates come in at, so that, or actually, they're not estimates anymore, they're actual bids. And what they come in at, and we can decide at that point, wow, that's significantly lower than, than even what we thought. Maybe now is really the time to do a formal bid at that point. So yes, and exactly what you said.
Thank you for clarifying.
Eric, this is Greg again. Could you simply, because I'm looking at the way that the, that item B is listed, could you simply put something like the bidding period will begin as early as April 29th, with bid opening scheduled for as early as May 27th, and then that gives you some flexibility?
Yeah, and I actually wrote this up before we had the opportunity to talk to Anthony about it. So I would probably even take dates out of there and ask for authorization to, to go out to bid at, at a given time, determined best by the administration, the architect, or something like that. I would get Bob to help me out with that, that language that he feels is best, but I would probably take the dates out. And I, by the way, I put April 29th in there so that you realize that we weren't going out before that.
I mean, I'm fine doing this. But I also know that I believe the fundraising, which the goal was, what, 1.2 million, we're still, you know, 400,000 short in that regard. So Greg, where, where are we looking with the fundraising? Are you seeing any encouragement? I know given the situation, it's probably a little scary for some folks.
We just kind of put the fundraising on the back burner right now until we know whether or not we're going to bid the project.
Well, I would say don't do that. I mean, because we're really, I mean, it's hard for us to approve a bid if you're still 30-some percent short of the fundraising.
Well, and that's contingent upon the, the, the project coming in at $2.2 million. And if the, if the project comes in at a half a million dollars less, then there's a significant amount of money, less money needed. I mean, everything is contingent upon a budget.
Yeah, well, I would certainly hope anything under would be to the benefit of the district because we're the ones who really need to save this money. I mean, we, we were told, you know, when we approved this, that you guys are going to go gung ho and get this 1.2 million. There was never any discussion about not necessarily having to raise that if it comes in lower. I mean, it was a very plain 1.2 million.
No, well, it was pretty obvious that was the goal, and, and it was pretty clear through the discussion. If the fundraising goal was short, the board would have a decision to make. And the board could either say, no, we're not going to do it, or yes, we are. And I mean, obviously, they're not at $1.2 million right now. But I don't know that that should stop the district from determining what the real cost of this project's going to be.
Yeah, I'm fine getting that cost, but I, I don't understand the rationale of stopping the fundraising then. I really don't.
I would agree because this is Bath.
Well, that's a question for the Polar Bear Foundation, and if Beth could report back after the next meeting, maybe she could get some insight from them, because I know Mike and I are continuing to fundraise, but we have been, we have been stuck in our homes for the last four weeks, like you. So our ability to do that has been limited, and our focus for the last two weeks has just been shoring up our current donors.
Okay. All right, I got it. I'm just, I'm just saying when the opportunity arises, I'd still be out there, you know, when you have that opportunity.
Yeah.
We'd love to, we'd love to get this thing going, but Ken, more we can do.
And I can tell you that Mike and I, as part of this fundraising committee, are going to keep raising money. I mean, we're not going to stop.
Okay.
We can keep raising money for, for 10 more years.
Yeah.
Well, this is Bath. I, I had to miss the last Polar Bear Foundation meeting, as you, as everyone knows, because we had our own meeting, so I will certainly find out. I did reach out to them, and as Eric reported, they were pretty positive about people being, understanding the unusual circumstances we are in in terms of donations. But I also, I agree with Ken to continue fundraising because it could be put into a, you know, turf maintenance fund, so then in the future, the funds wouldn't be coming out of district money. We just would have We just would have this pot of money to help keep it maintained and in in the best shape it can be in. So definitely let's keep going. It'd be great.
Just, if I can just chime in, we have been keeping going. Emails have been going even as we sit locked away. And you don't have to be a member of the of the committee to to help us fundraise. So we would enjoy having more more of you help us with this. Just no, I mean, it it's a big lift. I I will admit, I did not think we'd get anywhere close to what we've raised so far. So huge kudos to the people that are on this committee, Greg, Mike, Matt Lusk, that have really put a lot of time and energy into this and have raised the amount. I wanted to also let you know that I did check with the organization that we're working on for the R cap grant. And Kyle Fitzsimmons is is my contact there. And there is still the intention by the administration to fund those R cap grants. Now, in talking with Don Kiefer, we realized that you can only fund it if the money is there to fund it. And and the state is in a difficult situation as well. So we're not putting our, you know, we're not, we're not gambling on R cap funding coming through. But we will continue working through that process. And as soon as that that grant opens up, we will be working with them and are hopeful that there's still some possibility. I know I said the last time I met with the board that I highly doubted that that was even there anymore. I'm probably 50/50 now. When I last talked to you, I was probably 80% sure it wasn't going to be funded, just based on my assumptions. But I'm probably at a 50/50 point now.
Eric, have you been able to get anything? I mean, I think we talked last night. You know, can we go back, you know, say that money becomes available in, you know, 18 months? Can we go back and recruit on money we would have spent now? Or does it have to be spent once we receive it?
I have not had a chance to to look into that, but I will.
Okay.
I just have a question. I have a question for Greg. Greg, is there, and I don't, I don't get the banner every time it comes out. But is there any way that we could maybe get on the front page of the banner where we could say donations needed? To try to, you know, a lot of people are sitting at home with idle time, maybe kind of get things out there in the forefront of people. I know right now people are having hardships, but there's also a lot of people being generous.
Yeah, I'm sure we could, Anne. I'm not in charge of marketing or advertising. My role is to 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 go after strategic high dollar people. But the foundation is responsible for all of the marketing and all of the 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 stuff that you're talking about, Ian. So I can talk to Matt Lusk about that.
Okay, it was just a thought.
Yeah, Beth, could you have some conversations as well?
Yeah, I meant, I emailed them and just about that and that they were going to, they were reaching out to the donors, kind of what Dr. Hespock said earlier. But it was all very positive, which was really great. I mean, I made sure that they understood that it was a pause because of the circumstances and definitely not a, you know, stop the project. We're all still on board, but we just have to kind of reevaluate where we are.
Yeah, that was my question. I was going to ask this, Kevin. If if we've got any feedback from any of the donors that they're, you know, having issues with commit, staying to their commitment on the donations due to the situation.
No, just timing is is really the only concern. And so that's, as Jason Young spoke to you about in the last budget meeting, you know, we don't expect to have have this money upfront before we start. We would have to, we would have to plan for this and then as we got the donations, you know, pay off that loan. But yeah, it's just timing. It's not a commitment. Nobody has backed down.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, this is Greg. The the people that I have that I've talked to were all still positive, but they were all very adamant that they're not going to make a donation until the project gets approved. And so they're willing, none of them have experienced financial hardship and said that they would not be able to meet their commitment, but they did have some concerns that they can't hold their commitment forever.
Understood.
Okay. Well, thanks. That was a good discussion on the turf field. Any, we have William Wells update on the agenda.
Yeah, I'll just give a brief update. This is Jason. And we are kind of in a holder, holding pattern right now. We have all the documents needed to go to the courts for approval of that sale, but the courts are shut down. And as Bob reached out, they were not booking any new hearings, at least until the end of this month. So May 1st, he's going to be reaching back out to try and get us in front of a judge to approve the sale of of William Wells. I did reach out to the potential buyers. They they understand where things are at and the delay. So I'd say it's probably unlikely that we'll be seeing any sort of finalized sale with money coming to us by June 30. That was my my hope, and I think we were on target for that. But like a lot of things right now, everything's put on hold. So it's it's still moving forward. Everybody's on the same page. We're just waiting to get in front of a judge.
Okay, yeah, that's understandable. Any questions on that? Okay, we had the discussion on the feasibility study on here.
I think that's just a carryover maybe from last month. Joe, you had given that report from from when we had met. So I didn't have anything new with that this month.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Budget Finance, Mr. Hlackey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. First item is item A, and those are four separate funds. I don't know if anybody has any questions on any of the individual checks, but food service, general fund, payroll, and student activity fund checks. Okay, if none, letter B is the treasures report. And I know Jason has been making some comments as we get closer to the end of this fiscal year. So Jason, did you have anything you wanted to specifically comment about current budget and budget to actual?
Yeah, hopefully you can see, I pulled up the budget status report here. Hopefully that took over the the screen for you. Can you all see the? Okay. So I did just want to point out a few things as, you know, I talked a little bit about on Thursday at the budget meeting with with where things were headed. I did want to speak to to the current fiscal year and how our financials are being impacted by the the closing of the school and and our revenues. So the bigger impact you're going to see if you compare this report to last month is frankly on the revenue side of things, not so much on the expenditure side of things. Again, like we discussed, the the two main areas that I'm seeing that are going to adversely affect our revenues are both with EIT and with really transfer taxes in the 1920 fiscal year. I guess the one positive with that was we were trending slightly higher with EIT before this shutdown. So I I did have it being slightly over our revenue budget with earned income tax. But of course, this now easily take up any overage we had and and then go to a negative. And then with really transfer taxes, I I really am not anticipating much of that for the rest of our fiscal year. So I've accounted for both of those changes in this report. And that's really driving the the majority of the the revenue loss for us in in the current fiscal year. And then looking down in the expenditures, you know, again, as as I had said the other night, it's a little early for me to get a good gauge as to where things are at. I did go through all of our outstanding encumbrances, our outstanding purchase orders, found some that I know we're not going to be obviously purchasing, you know, some transportation for field trips and things like that. I think probably that one of the bigger impacts will be not having any day-to-day subs for the most part here for the fourth marking period. So I've I've taken out costs associated with the day-to-day subs that we we would have had if we were actually in school right now. But really, for the most part, our our expenditures are going to be pretty normal. We're not going to have any dramatic losses of of expenses. You know, a lot of that's driven by what what the state has done and and us continuing to pay our employees and even some of our contractors, which we'll get into the the transportation piece here in a in a minute. So, you know, I'm I'm really not right now envisioning a lot of changes with our expenditures. Do I think they might come in lower than what you're seeing here? Yeah. I mean, I certainly didn't capture everything in in my review. But I I'm not seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars of of items that we're not going to be spending our money on. So that actually increases our deficit to about 1.45 million dollars in this fiscal year. If you remember, our budgeted deficit was 1.2. So, you know, about $240,000 more than what we had budgeted. And then as as I talked about in the past couple of months, we do have that refund of of prior year costs for bond money that'll actually show up as a revenue this year, but it's a reimbursement of costs from last year. So in total, when you look at our actual deficit and our audited financials, we're looking to be just under that 1.2 million dollars. But this 276 really has nothing to do with our current year operations. That's why I'm, for for this purpose, I'm showing that kind of below the line and showing that 1.45 is our is our operating deficit for the year. So any questions with that?
Okay, if there are none, Mr. Young, thank you very much. Letter C is reports of various accounts, both food service and student activity summary accounts, if there's any questions. Letter D would be to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Northern York Education Association for the Retirement Incentive Plan. And I think everybody, well, the 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 signed incentive plan was one of the attachments. Letter E is to approve, to uncommit $75,000 of fund balance for retirement commitments to unassigned fund balance. And Jason, could you just take a minute for new board members and talk about both committed and uncommitted fund balance? Because we do have some fund balance that has been committed or earmarked for other sources. And in this case, we're going to take some of that and uncommit it. So.
Correct. So so we have three different commitments of fund balance as we sit, you know, prior to this this reduction. One of them is for retirement, and that was done years ago when we had a surplus and we knew that the Piers rates were going to be increasing. So a commitment, it actually takes board action to commit fund balance. And then obviously, it takes board action to uncommit that fund balance for a specific purpose. So this uncommitment of the retirement will be the last amount we have or the final amount we have for retirement. So after this year, once we uncommit this 75,000, there will no longer be a committed fund balance for retirement. We will have used all of that. The other two areas are transportation and special services. The the reasoning or the thought behind that was if we have a a new bus run that is needed, that we did not budget, we would have a commitment of fund balance that we can use for that. We actually did uncommit some of that last year when we made some of those changes. So we did recently uncommit some of that money. And then special services is if there's there's some move-ins that we wouldn't have known about and and the special services budget, special education budget ends up being over budget. We have some committed fund balance for some of those higher-end or higher-cost students in in outside placements. So now, once we uncommit this 75, we'll only have two commitments left for transportation and special services.
Okay, thanks. Does any board member have any question about the committed and uncommitted? Okay, I'll continue. Letter F is to approve amendment of the contract for transportation of student services with Roar Bus Service for the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year, and that was something that the governor has allowed us to do, is to renegotiate contracts. Jason, I don't know if you have anything specific. Letter G is is similar, but that one is just with Kaufman Bus. But anything to point out with the with the amendments to the contracts?
Yes, I would like to to speak to those real quickly. So in the new school code, school code bill that was passed, the one item that they actually had two separate line items for was transportation. And the thought behind that, at least at the time, was, you know, you want to make sure you're you're, you have your transportation department, whether it's subcontracted or internally ready to go if the closure ends. And and you obviously need school buses to bring your students, you know, to and from school. So it's trying to continue their services. So, you know, I've I've had several conversations with both of our contractors, both Roar and and Kaufman. And to to keep it short, basically, we pay, what we pay our contractors is state formula. So what that means is there's a, there's a, there's a formula that the state has created that says you should be spending this amount of dollars on every mile you run for your for your buses. Some some schools pay above that formula, but we pay at state formula. And we're reimbursed from the state just under 50% of our of our transportation costs. And that's where that formula comes into play. So with that, really, the only piece to the to the contract that the that the contractors aren't using right now is the fuel piece, right? They're not running buses. They're not having any fuel costs. And and the formula takes into account everything. It takes into your personnel costs, your your bus costs, your fuel costs, wear and tear, insurance. It takes into account everything. So, you know, my my discussions with 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 our contractors was, well, you don't have the fuel cost. You know, so at the very least right now, you know, you're making out because there's there's no fuel beating spent. And they both agreed. And it actually was was pretty good timing because we're also going through a transition of our of our security radios district-wide. And we wanted to bring our our buses in line with that as well. And there just wasn't the capital to to do that before. So I asked both of them if they would be willing to use the fuel money that they aren't spending on fuel to purchase these radios for every bus in in their fleet, and they have have agreed to do that. So that's part of the the contract that's actually spelled out in the language to the amendment. So that's probably the biggest change there, other than we're going to be paying them the same amount. They're going to be reimbursing us and paying for the bus radios that frankly are are needed in our district. We have areas in our district in in the buses that are dead zones. We don't have good communication. We lose communication, certainly with with weather that becomes bad. We we lose it a little bit more often. So it is a, it is a security and and a need for us that we've had on our radar for for a few years. Matt Labute has done a lot of work on that. So I'm happy that we can at least, you know, when we make this transition with with our buildings, we can also do that with our with our buses right now. So that's really the biggest thing that that's that's in that amendment.
Yeah, and that was really good to do that because that was a significant savings to the district that we would have had to spend. So thank you.
Yeah, it's it's probably about 40 or so thousand per contractor. So it is definitely a significant amount of money.
Anybody have any questions on those contracts?
Yeah, Jason, I mean, as far as the extracurricular bus runs and stuff like that, how did that work out?
Yeah, good question. So we actually have two contracts. We have one contract, which is the amend, the amendment we're making for our regular transportation. We have a totally separate contract for all other extracurricular and field trip and all that kind of stuff. And basically, we're not running them, and so they're not, they're not making out. They're not making the money on it, which is, which is a financial impact to them. I mean, they use that revenue to offset some of their normal transportation. So, yeah, at this point, it's a, it's a use it and pay it, and since we're not using it, we're not paying anything for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Letter H is to approve the amending agreement with Quest Tech to add a technology specialist to the existing contract. And for new board members, back in 2018, we outsourced a significant portion of our technology to Quest Tech. And we we removed those positions from the from the district's obligation. So we had two IT specialists that the district's still employed. And so the amendment to this contract is going to switch that to just a single person.
Correct. We had a resignation of of one of those two positions and we'll be filling that or we're proposing to fill that with a Quest Tech position. So we'll be down to one, correct?
But is it possible, can Maureen pull that up? Because I did have one question. I don't know if she can pull up the amendment, but I think it was on the the pricing agreement. If you look at the if you look at where they're applying the amendment to the agreement, they're actually applying the amendment to to the current year we're in as well as next year. And I don't think it should be applied to this year because that resignation is not going to take place until the 2020-2021 contract, because our contract with them goes June 1st, I'm sorry, July 1st through June 30th. So if you, if you go back up, I'm sorry, Jase. Go back up to the 2019-2020, right there.
Right here.
Bottom of page two, keep going down. There's a little chart right there.
I don't think that first amending agreement should impact this year, the 67309, that should be a, a cost that is associated with next year's contract.
I'm, I'll, I'll ask Eric, but I know we were looking to try and fill that in May, so are they looking to do a prorated amount for that, Eric?
Yeah, actually, we asked them to try to have a person in there by, by June 1st because of the, the significant amount of work that needs to be done to recollect devices. And yes, it will be on a proration, so it'd be one month's worth of, of that amount.
Okay, because the, the way that agrees, our yearly fee is, is for the full amount, but we're only going to pay one month of the additional amending agreement?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Okay, moving on, Letter I is to approve payment to Crabtree Roar Bar for $41,513.10 from Capital Reserve Fund for Engineering Services with, for the turf field project.
Yeah, I, I did just want to clarify something, I did have a question about that. The payments made to Crabtree, but it is for the engineering costs. So it's, this isn't Crabtree architectural costs that we're paying, it is the actual engineer that we're paying, we're just, that's running through Crabtree. So the check's being paid to Crabtree, but they're then forwarding that to, to the engineer.
Yeah, and, and for new board members also, we, we had put money in Capital Reserve for the turf field project. There was $100,000 that was sitting there, so we've been using that money to pay the engineering services. So it's part of current money that's already been earmarked for the, the turf field. So it's not new money, but it's a new expense. And if anybody, nobody has any questions, then I'll pass it back to you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lattke, loving the beard, by the way.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, Athletics and Activities, Mr. Barnett.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. In Athletics and Activities, there are no action items. We do have one discussion item to postpone trips for current seniors here.
So before I get started on this, I know we were having some casual conversation with Zach at the, at the beginning of, of, or before the meeting started. Just for those who, who joined, Zach, as our, our student rep communicated with us that he has accepted an offer to go to Notre Dame next year. So I want to formally congratulate him and have that be on, on the record. And we're happy for you, Zach, and wish you all, all the best.
Thank you, I appreciate that, you guys as well.
And I just wondered if, if you had any insight, I, I'm sure the board would love to hear from, from a student's point of view, how things are going right now.
Um, well, for me personally, I feel like it's a little different than some other kids because all but one of my core classes are AP classes. So basically, we've just been, they've just been posting review materials and we've just kind of been like grinding through them, we're not learning any new content. But, you know, it's, it's been, it's been different. Obviously, a lot of us seniors are, you know, this wasn't how we had hoped or thought things were going to go. I know a lot of people are really disappointed about it, but our, I think our teachers have really done the best that they could, given the circumstances. And, you know, we're all in the, we're all in the same boat, and I think that everybody's committed to just getting through this and trying to, trying to make the best of it, that's, that's really all we can do.
Thanks, Zach, appreciate that.
Eric, if I could jump in one moment?
You bet.
I've been talking to Zach a little bit through email, and one thing that he mentioned that I thought was really important, especially to this board, was that he, he definitely applied to some of the top schools in the entire country and got into the likes of Notre Dame and Duke and a, a few of those places. And one of the things that he mentioned to me was that a point of conversation that maybe was a, a, something that set him apart was his, his position as a board, a student board liaison, that was something that came up in multiple, I guess, interviews, is that correct, Zach?
Um, a couple admissions officers gave me like notes after I've been accepted. Basically, like, trying to get together, and they mentioned some of the things that they, that they thought stood out in my application, and this was one of the things that was mentioned in all, in all of them. It seemed like they really liked this position, and it went along with my old political narrative that I created.
And I just, I just know I've been here for a few of these now, and, you know, for different reasons, certain students have been able to fully commit to this and, and some have not. And Zach, I just wanted to thank you, you have been fully committed to this position and have been just a valuable addition to this group, so I, I appreciate that. And thank you for sharing your remarks about our teachers, I know they are trying their best, and it's good to hear that, that you're doing well, so thank you.
We have some great teachers here, we really do, and, you know, it's been, I'm sure it's been just as difficult for them. I know a lot of them have reached out and they've said, you know, it's been just as frustrating because, you know, they, they were looking forward to, you know, finishing off with our class and getting to, getting to see the students that bring them joy every day. So I want to include them in that as well.
Thanks, Zach, and thanks, Mr. Lehman, appreciate that. So back to the, the topic of discussion, Mr. Barnett. Wanted to, to have some conversation with the board because a, a decision needs to ma, be made that the next superintendent will have to carry through on. And, and I need, I feel that, that that person needs board support in order to do that. We have a number of trips that have, that were scheduled and have had to be, been canceled because of the COVID-19 virus. One of those is, was the music trip to Disney, which I think would probably be going on like right about now had things not gone haywire. Another trip, and I'll ask Steve to, to help me remember this, but a trip to England this summer as well as a trip to France, does that sound right?
Yeah, the trip to France was scheduled for, I have it somewhere here, give me one second.
I want to say it was June or July.
July 3 through 12.
Okay. All of these trips are kind of capstone trips for students. The, the music trip is a once every four-year trip, so that every high school student gets to participate in that. The, the foreign trips are obviously kind of capstone trips for, for those departments. The French department and, and the English department, actually, traveling to England. So the question arises, what do we do about seniors who had, had planned on going on these trips? And no fault of their own or anybody's, those trips have been canceled. I had made a, a, a decision early on to say, you know, a lot of senior classes losing out on a lot of things, and unfortunately, this is going to be one that, that we can't make up for them. In, in terms of the music trip, the, the company that was the travel agent with that has allowed us to reschedule that trip to April of 2021. But the current senior class won't be around at that point in time. The same with the French trip and the trip to England, they're allowed to, they'll, they'll do that next year, but what about the senior class? So I, I've checked with Bob Frankhauser on this, as well as some other school districts, and said, what, you know, what are you doing? There is a, a movement with some to say, look, the senior classes has been put through enough. If, if we, if we allow them to, and if they, if they wish to come back next year and be a part of, of one of those trips a, a year later, you know, as long as they sign a waiver, making, you know, making sure that we're not held liable for, for anything and, and promising to, to be good on the trip, that others, other school districts are allowing that. There is some, some discontent with some parents in the music department that, that of seniors that aren't going to be able to go on the trip, they will lose $149. Now, that organization is willing to schedule a trip for that senior class at, at another time. The foreign trips, they will lose $500, those students. Again, EF Tours is willing to schedule trips for them, and they do college trips anyways, and is going to allow them to, to apply that, that money to those trips. My question to, to the board is, how would you feel about allowing our current senior class if they choose to be a part of a, a trip in 2021? Provided that they sign a waiver, you know, waiving the district from any kind of responsibility for, for them, and adhering to a, a number of other guidelines that, that we would say, I just want the board's feedback on that.
Hi, this is Beth, I think it's a, a good idea. But I, and, but any senior who's in college will be in their last week of classes and/or their finals. So we can certainly put the gesture out there and have it, but I'm, it's unfortunate that, but I bet many seniors won't be able to do it. At least for the music trip, I, the, other ones take place in the summer, so it's very different.
No, I agree, Beth, and that was my thought exactly. But I, I'm, in some of the emails that have come to me, it, it's, you know, they'll never get this chance, and we were hoping they'd get a chance, even if they went next year. So that's why I reached out and, and tried to figure out, so if, if it is an option, we could offer it.
Yeah, if they can figure out how to do it, kudos to them, I mean, I'm fine with it. The only thing I would ask a question about is the whole clearances, because they will all be over 18, and is that something we would require?
Well, they wouldn't be supervising students, so that's not something that I, probably defer to, to Vanjie's thoughts on that, but that's not something that, that I had thought about.
I don't know, they may be roving the students, who knows? But I, I don't, I'm just bringing it up as a, just another thing to think about, not that I'm worried about.
Thank you.
My only comment would be, I mean, I think it's great, I mean, anything that we can do to kind of make them feel a part of the, the senior year, not miss out, I, I would support. But I would say more pertaining to like the music trip is, it was already going to be a, a huge amount of students that were going, so I would be curious to know how many more would actually have interest in it and would take us up on that offer so that we know the, basically the numbers that we're looking at, and how that impacts what we're trying to do once we're there.
Yeah, thanks, Ann, I've talked with Laura about that, she's also checking in with Disney, you know, can those students participate in the workshops and so forth? And, and by the way, this would just be for the class of, of 2020, wouldn't be precedent-setting, and we're not extending this to, to their parents so that they can be chaperones, that, that's not what this is for. So it would only be for those students who are in the class of 2020. Any other thoughts, or are you okay if we, if anybody opposed to, to me working through that process? And thank you, Mr. Barnett, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Eschewok. Mr. President, that's it for the Athletics and Activities.
Okay, and policy, it looks like we have nothing there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so we will log off of this meeting and go into our executive session, all righty?